Okay, welcome everybody to the Bellevue City Council Meeting. It is Tuesday, May 3rd, 2022 at 6:00 PM. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance, so if you would stand for that, and then we'll follow that with the invocation by Pastor Walter Hooker from the Bellevue Christian Center, 1400 Harville Drive.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we are so thankful for your presence here at this meeting tonight. First of all, we want to give thanks to you for this great city that we have the privilege to live and to serve. We thank you for the private citizens of Bellevue. We thank you for the businesses. We thank you for the first city of Nebraska and all that it means to each one of us. Tonight, Lord, we ask that you would give these elected officials and these volunteers the wisdom that comes from you, that in unity they could decide the issues that are before them tonight. Lord, we would come against any division, any bitterness, anger, any wrath, anything, Lord God, that would discourage the work that you need to happen here tonight. And Father, we invite the wisdom that only comes from heaven, that as people seek you and seek your will and seek the goodness for the people of this city, God, it be obvious what your will and your way is. Tonight, we give you thanks for our leaders. We ask you to bless each one of them, bless their families. God, give those here tonight your favor. We would pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Hooker. Okay, I'll call the meeting to order. Angela, would you take roll call, please?
Mr. Stinson?
Here.
Mr. Cook?
Here.
Mr. McCall?
Here.
Mr. Preister?
Here.
Mr. Burns?
Here.
Ms. Welch?
Here.
Thank you. Okay, this meeting will be conducted in accordance with the Nebraska Open Meetings Act. A copy of that act is located on the rear wall of the council chambers. Item 5, Approval of Agenda, Consent Agenda, Claims and Advisory Committee Reports. 5A, Approval of the Agenda. Do I have a motion? Councilman Burns?
I move we approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Burns, second by Cook. Any comments or discussion? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carried.
Thank you. And bear with us a little bit this evening. Our clerk and deputy clerk are both out today, so Angela is filling in for us today. Item 5B, Approval of the Consent Agenda. Items marked with an asterisk are approved where this item is unless otherwise removed. Do I have a motion? Councilman Burns?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Burns, second by Preister. Are there any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carried.
Thank you. Item 9, Approved Citizen Communications. We have none. Item 10, Liquor Licenses. There are none this evening. Item 11, Ordinances for Adoption, third reading. Item 11A, Ordinance Number 4084, Request to Rezone Lots 1 and 2. Outlook addition being a replat of Tax Lot 10B located in the southwest quarter of Section 10 Township 13 North, range 13 East of the 6th PM. Sarpy County, Nebraska, from Ag to RS 120 for the purpose of single-family residential development. Applicants are Cheryl and James Francoise. That item was pulled by the applicants, so 5A has been removed. Or 11A, sorry. 11A or 11A1 has also been pulled, so we will go to 11B. 11B, Ordinance Number 4085, Request to Rezone Lot 1. Powers addition from ML to RE for the purpose of single-family residential development. Applicant Jeremiah Windsor, general location 304 East La Platte Road. Angela, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance Number 4085, An Ordinance to Amend the Official Zoning Map of the City of Bellevue, Nebraska, as provided for by Article 3 of Ordinance Number 3619, by changing the zone classification of land located at or about 304 East La Platte Road, more particularly described in Section 1 of the ordinance, and to provide an effective date.
Thank you, and do I have a motion? Councilman Stinson?
Make a motion that we approve ordinance Number 4085.
Second.
Okay, so just some discussion, does it have discussion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. Just real brief. I'm gonna vote no for this. And the reason for it is, Mr. Windsor was well aware of, when he was purchased in this house, he was well aware that it needed to have a zone change. And everything around there, in our comprehensive plan, we've already, probably for the last 20-plus years, we've sort of had an idea of what the city wanted down there, and it would not be for a residential home. So I think Mr. Windsor knew that it was gonna be a hurdle to come here today and probably get this approved, and I'm just letting everybody know I'm gonna vote no. Thank you.
And I would just add that that is against our comprehensive plan, and it will really create future issues, in my opinion, so. Is there any more comments or questions?
Yeah, I just wanna clarify that it was a positive motion to approve it. So if you want to approve the rezoning, vote yes. If you want to not approve the rezoning, vote no.
Thank you. All right, no more questions, please vote.
Five voting no, one voting yes, Mr. Burns. Motion failed.
Okay, thank you. Item 11C, Ordinance Number 4086, Annexation Area Number 1. Request to Annex Sanitary and Improvement Districts Number 67 Normandy Hills and Number 242 Cedar View and all abutting rights of way. Applicant City of Bellevue. Angela, would you read that ordinance, please?
Just a second, I think I was on the wrong one, I apologize. Ordinance Number 4086, An Ordinance to Annex the City of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska, certain lands, lots and real estate lying within the below-described boundaries and designating an effective date.
Thank you, and do I have a motion? Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance Number 4086.
Second.
Motion by Welch, second by Stinson. Any discussion, questions, comments? Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. Just some clarification. At the last meeting and the public hearing, we had some discussion and I think made, I heard some promises to the people, particularly roads and access issues. After this is passed in two weeks, it'll be annexed. Could I just get a little information about what will unfold after that? What kind of a, I think we mentioned in the next year, kind of a timeline for those folks that are concerned, and anything that's happened in the interim?
Okay, I'll let Mr. Risto. Or Tammy?
Yes. So if approved tonight, the effective date of the ordinance would be June 2nd, so it won't be effective until that time. Did have some questions in regards to street maintenance, street repair. Our Public Works Department, our Street Superintendent, has done a general overview of the needs of the streets out there. If this ordinance is approved, then our Street Department will take a closer look at exactly what is needed and when, and a timeline will be laid out for that. The city's in a good position right now because we will be beginning our budget process for the next fiscal year, so these are all items that can be looked at as we prepare in the next coming months our budget for the next year. Typically, with snow removal, anything like that, there could be a chance that perhaps the city would contract with the county some snow removal or some maintenance initially, but again, in the summer months, hopefully, we should be okay for a while. So I think the main concern has been with streets. With the change of 911 and all those other services, if this is approved tonight, all the utility companies, county offices will be notified, and so everyone will know that as of June 2nd, those services will switch over. Everyone also will get notified by wastewater as far as papillion sanitation. I'm not sure if you folks already have papillion sanitation or not, but that will also be implemented within, you know, the coming weeks. So I think those are the main items that people have been concerned with, but again, we have approximately 30 days before it takes effect, so that's all time that the city departments have to kind of get everything together and get prepared for the annexation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Okay, I have a motion by Welch, second by Stinson, to approve the annexation ordinance Number 4086. Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carried.
Okay, thank you. Item 11D, Ordinance Number 4087, Annexation Area Number 2. Request to Annex Tax Lot 9A1, Except Right-of-Way, Section 23-13-13. Tax Lot 9B, Except Right-of-Way, Section 23-13-13. And the irregular northeasterly part of Tax Lots 14A and 14B, Section 23-13-13. All located in Section 23 Township 13 North, Range 13 East of the 6th PM and all abutting rights of way, applicant City of Bellevue. Angela, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance Number 4087, An Ordinance to Annex to the City of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska, certain lands, lots and real estate lying within the below-described boundaries and designating an effective date.
Thank you, and do I have a motion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion, we approve ordinance Number 4087.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, second by Welch. Comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carried.
Thank you. Item 11E, Ordinance Number 4088, Annexation Area Number 3. Request to Annex Tax Lots 5A and 16A and the northeast quarter of the northwest quarter and the north half of the southeast quarter, west of road located in Section 23, Township 13 North, Range 13 East of the 6th PM and part of Tax Lot 3, lying west of 5th Street, located in Section 14, Township 13 North, Range 13 East of the 6th PM and all abutting rights of way, applicant City of Bellevue. Angela, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance Number 4088, An Ordinance to Annex to the City of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska, certain lands and real estate lying within the below-described boundaries and designating an effective date.
Thank you, and do I have a motion? Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance Number 4088. I'm glad I didn't have to read all that.
Second.
Wait till the next one. Okay, motion by Welch, second by McCaw. Any comments or questions? Tammy?
Mayor, Mr. Mayor, thank you. If I could just make one update. There was an error on the Planning Department's cover sheet. The motion at Planning Commission was a motion to approve. Voting yes was Casey, Arnie, Cutsforth and Compton. Voting no was Hankins, Ritson, Perrin, so an acolyte abstaining. So it did pass with a recommendation of approval.
Okay, thank you. Comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carried.
Thank you. And again, all these annexations take place June 2nd, correct, Tammy?
Correct.
Item 11F, Ordinance Number 4089, Annexation Area Number 4. Request to Annex part of Tax Lot F1A and part of Tax Lot J, except part taken for NRD. Tax Lot F1B and part of Tax Lot H. Part of Tax Lot F1A, part of Tax Lot J, taken for NRD. And part of Tax Lot K, all located in Section 11 Township 13 North, Range 13 East of the 6th PM. Part of Lots 12A, 13B and 14B Butterfield Subdivision. Part of Lot 13A, north of Drainage Ditch, and part of Lot 14 Butterfield Subdivision, all except part for NRD. Part of Lot 13 and part of Lot 14 Butterfield Subdivision, all for NRD. Parcel ID Number 011605116. Oops, sorry. That's parcel ID Number 011605117. Part of Tax Lot 14, located in Section 11 Township 13 North, Range 13 East of the 6th PM. Together with Lots 13C and 12B Butterfield Subdivision. Part of Vacated State Right-of-Way in the east half of the east half of the southeast quarter and adjacent Tax Lot 14, Section 10 Township 13 North, Range 13 East of the 6th PM. Part of Vacated State Right-of-Way in the southwest quarter of the southwest quarter, west of Fort Crook Road South, Section 11 Township 13 North, Range 13 East of the 6th PM. And Lot 1C Palm Tag Subdivision and all abutting rights of way, applicant City of Bellevue. Angela, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance Number 4089, An Ordinance to Annex to the City of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska, certain lands, lots and real estate lying within the below-described boundaries to the City of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska, and designating an effective date.
Thank you, and do I have a motion? Councilman Stinson?
Make a motion that we approve ordinance Number 4089.
I'll second that.
Motion by Stinson, second by Welch. Comments or questions from the council? Okay, please vote.
All voting yes, motion carried.
Okay, thank you. Item 11G, Ordinance Number 4091, An Ordinance to amend certain sections of Chapter 18 of the Bellevue Municipal Code and to add new sections pertaining to parking enforcement. Angela, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance Number 4091, An Ordinance to amend Chapter 18, Sections 18-31, 18-34, 18-35, 18-37, 18-51, 18-52, 18-53, 18-65, 18-66, 18-74, 18-90, 18-91, 18-92, 18-93, 18-100 and 18-136 of Bellevue Municipal Code pertaining to parking enforcement to repeal all previous versions of the same and to add new sections 18-67 through 18-70 and to provide an effective date.
You're qualified. Good job. Any questions or comments? I need a motion first, Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion, we approve ordinance 4091.
Motion by Cook, second by Preister. Any comments or questions? Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. There's a section in here that deletes completely the prohibition of an area two feet from either side of the driveway. I'd like legal counsel to maybe explain what's happening there.
Are you possibly referring to the parking revisions in the next ordinance?
Yeah, so this Chapter 18 just deals with parking tickets. Chapter 20 is one that repeals the two-foot ordinance, which is the next one.
I jumped ahead. My apology, thank you for correcting it. No further questions.
Thank you, any more questions? Okay, motion by Cook, second by Preister. Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carried.
Thank you. 11H, Ordinance Number 4092, An Ordinance amending Chapter 20, Article 1, Sections 20-16 and 20-20.1 of City Code relating to certain offenses. Angela, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance Number 4092, An Ordinance to amend Chapter 20, Article 1, Sections 20-16 and 20-20.1 of the Bellevue Municipal Code pertaining to offenses to repeal all previous versions of the same and to provide an effective date.
Thank you, and do I have a motion? Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion to approve ordinance Number 4092.
Second.
Motion by Welch, second by Stinson. Questions? Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. And after giving a little warning earlier, I would ask Ms. Matthews if she could comment on that two-foot section of driveway on the right and left that's being eliminated, and if there is some other provision where that's still enforced.
Okay, I'll take this one. Annie worked on Chapter 18, the last one, and she did an amazing job. I kind of worked on this one, so I'll take this question. So in 20-20.1, we eliminated an offense for standing within two feet of either side of the driveway, but that section is still in Chapter 18 regarding vehicles, so it will remain illegal to park a vehicle within two feet of a driveway, but not illegal to stand within two feet.
Okay, thank you. And that issue, as well as a couple of others, were raised by a constituent, Mr. Hanson, and he, I have to compliment, because he reads these things, I think with a microscope or a magnifying glass or something, and he scrutinizes them carefully. One other thing that he mentioned was the 50-feet distance, and so I think it's good to verify. I was outside, and I was listening carefully. It was quiet around my house, but over 80 feet away, there were some children playing, and I could clearly hear those children playing 80 feet away. So I think the 50-feet distance is very well-covered, and if it's a loud sound, you're gonna hear it very easily, when I can hear children, and they weren't being rough, they were just normally talking. So I think we have all of the concerns that Mr. Hanson raised covered, and I appreciate him raising them, and we do listen and we do respond. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more comments, questions? Okay, we have a motion by Welch, second by Stinson. Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carried.
Thank you. Item 11I, Ordinance Number 4093, An Ordinance requesting to vacate all of 37th Street between Marie Street and Vase Street, abutting within Vase Hill Haven Addition and Lots 2 and 3, Block 1, Vase Hill Haven Addition and Lot 2, 3A, 3B, 4, 5 and 6 of Block 2, Vase Hill Haven Addition, located in Section 20 Township 14 North, Range 13 East of the 6th PM. Angela, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance Number 4093, An Ordinance declaring the necessity, expediency and propriety of vacating all of 37th Street between Marie Street and Vase Street, abutting within Vase Hill Haven Addition. In addition to the City of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska, Lot 2 and 3, Block 1, Vase Hill Haven Addition, and Lots 2, 3A, 3B, 4, 5 and 6, Block 2, Vase Hill Haven Addition, located in Section 20 Township 14 North, Range 13 East of the 6th PM, Sarpy County, Nebraska, now here 2 for vacated, repealing all ordinances and all parts of ordinances in conflict herewith and designating an effective date.
Thank you. And do I have a motion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion, we approve ordinance Number 4093.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, second by Welch. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carried.
Thank you. Item 11J, Ordinance Number 4094, An Ordinance to amend Chapter 28, Article 3, Sections 28-77 and 28-77.1 of City Code, amending certain language pertaining to cost and other fees relating to permitting. Angela, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance Number 4094, An Ordinance to amend Chapter 28, Article 3, Sections 28-77 and 28-77.1 of the Bellevue Municipal Code pertaining to offenses to repeal all previous versions of the same and to provide an effective date.
Thank you, and do I have a motion? Councilman Burns?
I move that we approve ordinance Number 4094.
Second.
Motion by Burns, second by McCaw. Comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carried.
Thank you. Item 11K, Ordinance Number 4095, An Ordinance to amend Section 8-18 of Chapter 8 of City Code pertaining to Fire Section 903.3.2.2 of the 2021 International Building Code. Angela, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance Number 4095, An Ordinance to amend Section 8-18, Chapter 8 of the Bellevue City Code pertaining to the 2021 Edition of the International Building Code to repeal Section 8-18 of Chapter 8 of the Bellevue- of chapter eight of the Bellevue City Code as heretofore existing to provide for the publication of this ordinance and to provide for the effective date of this ordinance.
Thank you. Do I have a motion? Councilman Burns?
I move that we approve ordinance number four zero nine five.
Motion by Burns, second by Stinson. Comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carried.
Thank you. Item eleven L, ordinance number four zero nine six, an ordinance to amend section twelve dash thirty-six, nine zero three dot three dot one dot two of the two thousand twenty-one International Fire Code. Angela, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four zero nine six, an ordinance to amend section twelve dash thirty-six dot one of the Bellevue Municipal Code pertaining to the Bellevue Fire Prevention Code to repeal section twelve dot thirty-six dot one of chapter twelve of the Bellevue City Code as heretofore existing to provide for the publication of this ordinance and to provide for the effective date of this ordinance.
Thank you. Do I have a motion? Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance number four zero nine six.
Motion by Welch, second by Preister. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carried.
Thank you. Item twelve, ordinances for public hearing. Second reading, we have none this evening. Item thirteen, ordinances for introduction. First reading, thirteen A, ordinance number four zero nine eight, repealing chapter fourteen, section fourteen dash six pertaining to slaughterhouses, soap factories, feedlots, et cetera. Angela, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four zero nine eight, an ordinance to repeal chapter fourteen, section fourteen dash six of the Bellevue Municipal Code regarding slaughterhouses, soap factories, feedlots, et cetera, and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. The second reading and public hearing will be May seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two at six P M here in the council chambers. And thanks to Legal and Permits and Planning and Fire and everybody else for all that work that's cleaning up a lot of city business there. Item fourteen, public hearing on matters other than ordinances. Fourteen A, request for site plan approval for lots two thirty-seven A one A one, two thirty-seven C, two thirty-seven D, two thirty-seven E, two thirty-seven F, and two thirty-eight C, Fontanelle, for the purpose of an eleven-unit apartment building, applicant M F R Partners, sixteen LLC, general location, Country Club Court and West Martin Drive. Okay, I'm gonna open this for public hearing. I'd like to start with the developer. Uh, after the applicant uh discusses the project, it's pretty important we hold the public hearing to the five-minute limit. Um, and if you are speaking, please uh try not to repeat what everybody else has uh, has talked about prior to you. Um, it'll speed things up a little bit and keep, uh, keep our attention on it. We're gonna, we're gonna pay attention to everything, so. Um, anyway, we'll go ahead and start pla- and when you come to the podium, please state your name and address and sign in.
Yes, sir. Uh, Mark Lapuza of the law firm Panzing Hogan Ernst and Bachmann, one zero two five zero Regency Circle on behalf of the applicant. Uh, as stated, this is uh seeking site plan approval for an eleven-unit apartment building uh in Fontanelle Hills to replace an eleven-unit apartment building that burnt down in March of last year. Uh, this is between Tanglewood and Country Club Court uh just off of Martin Drive. Uh, Tanglewood and Country Club Court will be the access points for the building right there. Um, and it will be removing what's the former leasing office that's sitting there. Um, we're not here seeking any waivers or any variances. Uh, this fully complies with all code requirements uh and complies with zoning. Uh, we proceeded with a recommendation from planning staff uh up through the planning board meeting. Uh, planning board uh voted uh to disapprove this project. Uh, and that's despite the fact that it's a, a one-for-one replacement of an existing building. Uh, the specific reason stated for denial uh was that it was on a different lot. There's two different lots owned by Fontanelle, owned by the applicant. Uh, and this would move from the uh, from the eastern lot to the western lot. Uh, having seen the meeting and talked to people that were at the meeting and, and in the neighborhood meetings, uh, the, the functional reason underlying that denial, in my opinion, was a lack of understanding as to why the heck we were moving this thing. Uh, the most common sentiment was, can this be rebuilt exactly where it was? Why are you putting this somewhere else that neighbors would have to see and all these changes? Um, we covered this in significant detail in a two-and-a-half-hour meeting with the residents. I promise I won't take that much of your time. Uh, the short version of the story is that we were unable to rebuild on the original site because we were unable to meet two significant requirements. Uh, number one, we couldn't get the grade to a level where it was acceptable to the fire department. Obviously, a building just happened to burn down. That's a concern. Uh, and the ability of trucks to access the site were a concern for the fire department. We couldn't meet a five percent grade without exorbitant costs. Also, given the fact that we are rebuilding a new building, um, we now have A D A requirements for compliance. And the ability on such a hilly site, if you're familiar with the area, to allow zero entry and ramps, would have had about two hundred feet of ramps, uh, and we would have been looking at increasing the cost of this project about fifty percent to rebuild in the exact same spot. Uh, we identified a second spot where we thought we'd be able to build, uh, discovered that we were, were not in a position to uh certify that we were able to build there under the original uh P U D and planning back from the nineteen sixties. Uh, and so after looking at site one and looking at some other areas and, and going through really a, a pretty exhaustive process, identified the current area off of Martin Drive. Um, we understand that this is more visible than the previous building, um, which for those that live in Fontanelle, uh, that would rather look at trees than look at our building, we certainly understand that's a concern. Um, we've uh, we've prepared and I've brought and will give to Tammy uh renderings of what we plan for it to look like to do the best we can to have it fit with the neighborhood. Uh, but ultimately, uh, I'd remind the city council that this is purely site plan approval. It's for a replacement of an existing building. It complies with all codes and all zoning ordinances, and we think the city council ought to approve this.
Okay, thank you. And uh, any questions right away? Or you wanna hold them? Okay. Okay, the public hearing is open? Oh, yeah, while you're uh coming in, coming up and signing in for the public hearing, I did get, uh, the clerk did receive letters in opposition from David Ballsilly, Colin Swanson, Gordon, and Clara Arndsdorf. So we do have those in the file and on record.
Before I start my five minutes, I don't know, Angela, can you put a picture of the, the uh applicant's rendition of what the apartment would look like?
While she's doing that, uh, good evening, uh, Mayor, council members. Uh, I am Rich Casey, two oh five Forest Drive. I'm speaking this evening as a resident of Fontanelle Hills, uh, but I'm also speaking on behalf of the uh Fontanelle Hills Homeowner Association as a president, speaking on behalf of the Board of Directors. And I'm also speaking on behalf of Brandy Goldapp. Brandy is the owner, Brandy and her husband Stephen are the owner of A View. A View is that iconic-looking chateau uh building that's kind of the, the centerpiece of our neighborhood that is now an, an event venue. They do weddings and et cetera, uh, things there. Uh, Brandy would love to be here, but she had a choice of uh vacationing in Honduras or being here. I suspect she probably made the right choice. Uh, but she would like to be here, she would have liked to be here to express her opposition uh to this on the grounds that is, is definitely a detriment to her uh business uh because of the location of it. And also she would express her concerns, and she asked me to express her concerns with some ongoing issues about how damage to her property is being caused by uh failure of the apartment owners to take care of their property and runoff, undermining her sidewalks, undermining her pool, undermining her uh, her parking lot. So when we uh, when we purchase a home, I think we have certain expectations and I'm, I'm, I'm gonna be pressed to get through five minutes, so I'll just uh put, let Tammy or, yeah, Tammy split through these. This is some of the uh, the runoff. This is what's causing the runoff that's going down into the pool that's affecting Tammy's. And you can see, this is before the rainstorm uh just the other, or yesterday. This is all the mud that's being drained down into her pool area from uh, from up above in the apartment area. So as I was saying, uh, when we purchase a home, I think we have certain expectations. When we purchase a home in a new housing area and there's an empty lot across the street, uh, certainly we should expect at some point that somebody's gonna build a house there. If we purchase a home in a new housing area and there's a cornfield uh behind the house, we should expect that at some point there's probably gonna be a new housing area there. That's the natural progression of the city. However, I would submit that when you own a home in a, an established area, and that, an area in this case that's been established for almost fifty years, we shouldn't expect somebody to come in and tear down the house across the street and put in a parking lot just forty feet in front of our yard. And uh, you can hold off on the rest of those Tammy's if you wouldn't mind. And a, an apartment building uh eighty to ninety feet in front of our house, apartment building that looks like that. And I want to be very clear about this picture. This is absolutely not what this is gonna look like. The facade may look like that, but you see all those trees? All those trees will be gone because there's no way they can build that without taking those trees down. And then when you take those trees down, what you're really gonna see is you're gonna see a three-apartment. This is looking from the house across the street. You're gonna see a three, three-story apartment, and you're gonna see two more stories of the building that's about thirty feet behind that. So if I'm living in that house, I'm gonna be looking at basically a five-story uh building directly across the street. That's not what we should expect when we, when we have a home in an established neighborhood. With this request this evening, the absentee landlord is taking the path of least resistance at the expense of the homeowners and is one of Bellevue's, I would submit, one of Bellevue's most beautiful uh and unique uh housing areas. Their desire to avoid additional cost of building at the existing site is understandable. Their lack of compassion for the homeowners who have to live with this right across the street is understandable because of course, they don't have to, to live there. They don't have to look at that every day, and they don't have to worry about their home value being affected. I want to be clear that the original site, the apartment that burned down, is buildable. It is absolutely buildable. The owners, the apartment representatives admitted that. What they did say was not financially okay, but, but it is buildable, and it is buildable. If the owners, when they submitted the plan, would have just looked at it a different way as it was just pre- presented, their, their presentation is building the apartment back like it was. And that's access from Martin Drive, which Martin Drive is, in, with the way the building originally set was almost at the roof level. If they would just build the apartment lower with the access at Hackberry Court, which is at the bottom of it, they would be building on an absolutely flat lot. And the parking lot and the, and the building would be at the exact same level on a perfectly flat lot. When we purchase a home, we expect our neighbors to be good neighbors. And Tammy, if you would flip through these slides, we expect our neighbors to keep up with their properties, so their neglect won't affect the value of our homes. A drive-through of the apartment complexes will validate that our absentee landlords have not been good neighbors. Garage doors. There's a bunch that are labeled uh garages here, Tammy.
Mr. Casey, you've got five minutes, but I'll just let you wrap up.
Okay, I'll finish real quick. Uh, I'll, as I continue, I'll just skip over this, but you can see the condition of the apartments, uh, the garages that uh are in our neighborhood already. Uh, this parcel, parcel of land extends almost the entire length of Martin Drive. And even though the applicant says they only wanna build one building on this one, one area on this parcel, I would ask you to consider this. I've lived in Fontanelle Hills for fifteen years, and those fifteen years, three apartment buildings have burnt down. Virtually all these apartment buildings are built into the side of a hill. So what happens when the next apartment building burns down? If you approved this application tonight, I would submit they're gonna come back and say, you've already approved one apartment building on Martin Drive. Why not put another one there? So I would close by just saying that these are tough, tough decisions. Uh, the planning commission, which I am a part of, but did recuse myself from this discussion, determined this project does not meet the requirements of compatible, conforming uh area and is not, and is a detriment to, to the area that we live in.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Patrick Mullins, two zero one Martin Drive. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am opposed to this relocation of the uh of the apartment from the original site to the new site. Um, my wife and I are uh second-generation Bellevue residents. This is the third home that we've owned in Bellevue. We went from Old Town to Cherry Hills to uh Fontanelle Hills. To the meetings we've uh attended, uh, we are of the opinion that the property can be rebuilt on the original site where it burned down. Um, there is a cost factor that uh the property management is not willing to pay, and we would ask the uh council and the mayor uh consider and support our proposition that it be rebuilt on that site so that the cost is not passed along to the homeowners in the neighborhood via the negative effect on our property values. Thank you for the opportunity, and I would like to cede the balance of my time to Mr. John Ostrand.
Thank you.
John, I'll keep track of anything that's yielded to you. And then just for anybody else that's coming up, if I hold up a sign, it means you have one minute left, just for your convenience.
Good evening. I'm Roxanne Mullins. I live at two oh one Martin Drive um in Fontanelle Hills. I am opposed to this proposal for the reasons that have been stated, and I would like to cede the rest of my time to John Ostrand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, good afternoon. Steve Manshage, two oh three Martin Drive. I uh prefer the original site. I don't think anyone opposes that. If you take a look at this picture, this is a couple days old. I just wanna know what's legal about a building being built there. Six months ago, I and seventy, uh, fifty-seven other neighbor homes received a certified letter on Sunday afternoon. Those same standards need to be applied here. I don't think they are. Um, my tree was in violation. I received a full-color picture of a leaf touching the top of a pole. I don't understand what's legal and non-conforming. Um, just don't understand that. Um, according to your accord, uh, ordinance for these complexes and apartments in Bellevue, um, the amount is exceeding two, three times the amount in this area. I, I just don't understand what game's being played here. Tanglewood Court, which would be the left of that picture, is a private driveway. Google your city maps and even uh, uh, other uh maps that you have in your states that it's private property. I don't understand how that could be conceived as a street. Uh, Martin Drive should be the setback facing it or not. Right, this is a bunch of smoke and mirrors here. I don't see what's legal about the setback. If it's off of Tanglewood Court, it's not Tanglewood Drive. It's a homemade sign. I believe it's their problem to fix, not ours and not yours. And I would appreciate you representing us. Um, I see the rest of my time to John Ostrand, unless there's any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you too, Mayor.
Thank you too, Mayor.
I live at 203 Martin Drive. I oppose the building of this, at this site. The original apartment site is preferred. I donate my time to John Ostrom. Please stop the clock. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you distribute those packets out to all of the individuals, please?
John, you get 21 minutes. I'm going to set my timer, okay?
That includes his.
That includes your time.
Is, can that be after I?
Absolutely. I'll wait until you say your name.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Do you want a five-minute warning when you're getting close, or 10, or is one okay?
Yeah, five is good. Thank you.
Awesome.
There's no trap door there either, so don't worry.
Mayor, it's great to see you, sir. Council members, all of the staff, I thank you for this opportunity. I do have a procedural inquiry after I have this, this spoken speech. Tammy, if you would just follow along as I read this, it would be certainly appreciated. Bear with me, there's a lot here to go over, but I didn't find a way to cut this short, and this is how impactful this is to us. So, for the record, I am John Ostrand, and I live at 207 Martin Drive, directly across the street from the proposed location of the new building being considered as part of this petition. I would like the city to thank the city staff for their assistance in helping me understand the application and the public approval process. I now know more about public records requests than I've ever hoped to know. The requested modification to the approved site plan is inconsistent with the adopted comprehensive plan and falls short of the adopted community standards as codified in the City of Bellevue zoning ordinance. In 2021, an update to the comp plan, over 90% of the respondents stated that the design appearance of buildings in the community was important. See page 293. Most, all of this stuff is referenced on your papers for your convenience. I couldn't agree more. The adopted district recommendations for Fontanelle is to capitalize on the forest theme. I would pose that, that removing of 13 to 16 mature trees that provide an effective buffer between the multifamily and the single-family land use designation is inconsistent with the comp plan. The Community Activities Center concept plan within the comp plan shows, single-family separated from high-density residential, the proposed building type. In this application, meets the definition of high-density residential within the comp plan, page 52, by park and open space. This application is inconsistent with the recommended design standards shown in the comp plan, allowing medium-density housing with dedicated open space is in, is highlighted in that comp plan. This application is proposing the diminishment of the open space that was created for over 47-plus years on the site under the planned subdivision. In addition, putting housing contr, excuse me, future land use designation is contrary to the comprehensive plan. The adopted district regulations for Fontanelle District states, capitalize on this forest theme. The Fontanelle District has large sections of heavy-forested land. This nat, natural asset should be better used without compromising the health and welfare of the forest. A series of straight-line boulevards could extend from the forest as a way of branching the forest into other areas of Bellevue. The proposed site is inconsistent with this adopted policy goal. The proposed reduction in open space on the parcel, as well as the removal of mature trees, is contrary to the goals of the community. In addition, on page eight of the comp plan, it states, and it's intended to promote plans that promote quality development that is congruent with the vision of the community. A plan that is architecturally incompatible with the neighborhood, removes mature, effective landscape buffers, and provides only nominal buffering with adjacent residential development is not consistent with the adopted vision, goals, and guiding principles of the City of Bellevue. Unfortunately, the staff was unable to provide me information on the city's comp plan that was in place when the original site plan was approved. Looking at the future land use map, page 60 of the comprehensive plan update, shows the multifamily designated property in Fontanelle adjacent to my property is clearly a unique situation. Of course, as a homebuyer, my wife and I expected the multifamily use across the street to continue, not to expand, and to expand in such a way that is clearly inconsistent with the architecture and design philosophy that was originally envisioned and constructed on the site. It's also inconsistent with the zoning ordinance. The site plan of the original approved plan included in your packet is difficult to read, but it is clear that the intent behind the plan was to incorporate what was at the time a very forward-thinking design principle of type of planned unit development. In fact, it is referenced as that in your zoning ordinance. When I met with staff, they were unable to tell me which of the zoning standards now are being applied to the site plan review, the original or what is in place today. Regardless, the intent of this district remains largely the same. 5.17.01, the intent. The intent of the planning subdivision district is to encourage the creative design of the new living areas as distinguished from the standard subdivisions. This district is designed to be appended to another basic residential district so as to provide for the modifications in the plating of lots and the sitting of buildings. Per the staff, at the time of the adoption of the site plan, ordinance 1186 was in place, which amended the zoning ordinance to adopt a planned subdivision district. The zone is designed, the zone is designed to append to another basic residential zone as to provide the innovation in the plotting of lots, of lots and the sitting of buildings. Under the procedures of 5.17.03, when a property owner wishes to develop a parcel of property in a manner other than the normal lot arrangement, he may apply for a zoning change to the PES district. Said zoning change shall be an amendment to the zoning map and shall follow all procedural requirements for such changes set forth herein. As an exhibit accompanying the application for amendment to the zoning map, the owner shall provide a detailed site plan with such other sketch diagrams and calculations necessary to determine whether the proposed subdivision conforms with the provisions of this zone in the primary zone to which it is appended. The exhibit shall be prepared in accordance with the Chapter III preliminary plats of the subdivision regulations. Together with any requirements as determined by the planning director, such exhibit shall become a part of the amendment and shall form the basis for issuance of building permits and the conformity within. It states, before approving a PES district classification, the planning commission and the city council shall find the following. The proposed modification of the primary district regulations as to plating of the lots and the space limits will be in the public's interest and in harmony with the purpose of this ordinance and will not adversely affect nearby properties. Or, two, the configuration, topography, vegetation, drainage, or other natural features of the parcel is in such that the normal lot arrangement would not be appropriate, and the natural state of the parcel can best be preserved by the application of the planned subdivision district classification. Or, three, the owner will utilize new and innovation planning methods to develop a subdivision of sound character and in the public's interest, and the planned subdivision will be superior to a conventional subdivision. Four, the request for planned subdivision, subdivision district classification is solely not for the purpose of their convenience, their profitability, or caprice. The original ordinance had a requirement that had, that the back of all buildings have a separation of 40 feet. This requirement created a multifamily development and creates separation and enhances the open space feature of the site. It is my understanding that the standard planning practice for modification to planned district opens the entire district up for review. As is noted in the public notice for the site plan modification, which includes six parcels, it is clear that between vision and execution, there was a bit left on the table because the planned subdivision ordinance is clearly addressing the creation of developments such as cluster subdivisions whose intentions are to create similar product to the underlying zone district. In this case, single-family detached dwelling units while conserving open space. In this case, a different type of dwelling, multifamily attached, was constructed. However, the current ordinance is, is in effect now, and per the zoning ordinance, the uses permitted in the planned subdivision are the uses that are allowed in the underlying zone district, in this case RS 120. The uses that are allowed under the RS 120. Do you need me to all read that, or can you, following as far as the, the zone district portion of that, or would you like for me to skip over that?
I think we can, we got it in front of us, so I think we can read it fine. We're looking through.
To read through it or not?
No, go ahead and, we'll, we'll, we'll read through it.
Okay. So the intent of the district is, and the intent for the purpose of single-family residential developments in the other compatible uses for the relatively ample-sized lots. The permit uses are the following principles used permitted in the RS 120 district. One, single-family detached dwellings. Two, community gardens. Three, public overhead and underground local distribution utilities. Four, public parks and creation areas, playgrounds and conservation areas, including woodlands and flood controls, facilities operated by the City of Bellevue or other political subdivisions. Five, public utilities, main transmission lines, including substations, distribution centers, regulatory stations, pumping stations, treatment facilities, storage, equipment buildings, garages, towers, or similar public uses. Although the multifamily units may have been allowed in the 1970s because the use is no longer allowed in the RS 120 as permitted or conditional use, the existing apartment buildings, if the current standards are to be applied, are a legal non-conforming use. Construction, constructing a new apartment building on this site would be an expansion of a legal non-conforming use. Going into 4.16, non-conforming in general intent strictly reads, it is in the intent of this ordinance to permit lawful non-conformities to continue until they are removed, burned, but not encouraged to, not encourage their survival. Such uses are declared by this ordinance to be incompatible with permitted uses in the districts involved. It is further, the intent of this ordinance, that non-conformities shall not be enlarged upon, expanded, or extended, nor be used as grounds for adding other structures. Or use is prohibited elsewhere in the same district except as the, as may be authorized in this ordinance. The current number of units on the site right now, as advertised in the legal notice for the site plan modification, according to the property appraiser's data, is 196 units. 10.3 dwelling units per acre. The Bellevue Comprehensive Plan does not have density limits assigned to the land use categories as shown on the future land use map. Staff told me that the density is set by the zoning district. The density in RS 120 is 3.6 dwelling units per acre. Nothing in the planned subdivision district allows the underlying density limits to be exceeded. The application proposes raising that number of units on this site to 207, or the density of 10.9 units per acre. Under your existing regulation, the maximum density allowed on this site is 68 dwelling units on the entire 18.9-acre parcel. There are other zoning issues to include, the dumpster, the landscape, and the building quality of what they propose. Regarding the landscape that is required in, in the zoning ordinance, the planning commission pack did not, did not show all, overall calculations of landscaping for the site. For the building site, grass and boxwood hedges are proposed. This does not meet the standard for four-season landscape. In addition, the zoning ordinance does not provide minimum size requirements for the time of planting. By my calculations, if a five-gallon boxwood is planted at an initial height of 18 inches for Omaha's 5A zone, a minimum three-foot hedge to provide a visual and sound buffer would take three to four years to be effective. That compounded with the addition of no trees being planted does not meet the zoning ordinance' minimum landscape standards. I'm not sure there's even enough room on the proposed site for the 11-unit building giving the zoning ordinance requirement. Staff has shared with me, excuse me. Staff has shared with me that many of my concerns regarding this site will be addressed at the building permit stage of the city review, of the city review, including landscaping, architectural quality, and lighting. Given the unique nature of the planned zone district, it is appropriate for the council to have review and input on these important features. From the renderings, it does not appear that the buildings will be constructed of Class I materials. In addition, there are, there are other issues that will adversely impact my property as well as my neighbors. That is the location of dumpsters. This structure and its associated noises face our properties. I would request that under the provision of Section 8.1204, the trash receptacles be placed within the enclosed building. Finally, the original site plan and buildings were designed to blend with the existing site through facade, facade relief materials and color palette. From the reconstruction, reconstructed building on site, this original design philosophy intended to provide a better design and development is not being carried forward during the building permit review. Referring back to the other building that sits off facing a view.
Yeah, about four.
Thank you. The building as proposed fundamentally compromises the integrity of the built environment of the neighborhood and the intentions behind the, the approved development. Your planning commission recommended denial of this site plan application. Based on the inconsistency with the comprehensive plan and zoning ordinances, primary use and density, I encourage you to have the applicant revisit the original site. From the meeting minutes of the October meeting, it is clear that the proposed site is cheaper to build on, but the original site is still an option. Cheaper and easier is specially called out as a reason for the council to not approve a planned subdivision application. Why approve this site plan and contradict your zoning ordinance? I believe after the review of over 500 papers on here of the materials to get myself and others to this point, there is an overwhelming amount of facts and evidence to not only why you should, but why you have to deny this site plan application. I want to thank you. Thank Wendy. Can I get back in your remaining time? Thank you.
Thank you, John.
There was a, do I have a second or two?
You still have, still got a minute or two.
Yeah, about two minutes.
There was a procedural request that I was talking about. So in the midst of navigating this ordeal that I found myself in, we were looking at, and per a recorded email back and forth with, in your packet, could you, could you put this, Tammy, on your, on your screen? I asked that the council take a look at this. The wording in black is our response, and the wording back in red would be the response from legal. There is an application, or a petition here that I do believe that we have met all of the criteria and requirements.
the criteria and requirements to make this official. I would please ask that you identify that and look at that, please. And here is the original for the record that they still have the original copy.
John, it is posted publicly on Spark as well. It's acknowledged.
Before I go to the council, is there anyone else that would like to speak? Just state your name and address and sign in, please.
I will, as soon as I find my quick notes. Joe Massounis at ten ten Martin Drive. I had a lot more to say, but John had every single point and I had lined up, so I'll go to the quick stuff here. Really, the only point that hasn't been addressed is that it's the unit proposed is a little more urban-like and it's really more fitting along, you know, midtown Omaha than it is in Bellevue. It's a very, you know, forestry area, we love it, and I think if, I lost my notes, went to the wrong page. I think if you guys do approve this, you might want to change it from Fontanel Hills to Apartment Hills, because that's all it's going to be is apartments, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to come forward right now?
Good evening. Thanks for allowing me to talk here. My name is Alan Stone. I'm at one oh one Martin Drive. They're signing in here or I'll forget. Moved here two years ago and probably in the last couple of years, I haven't really got to know my neighbors until the last three to four months, three months. And you can see that we're very passionate about our neighborhood, we're passionate about our families, we're passionate about the safety of our environment, as I'm sure all of you are. I'm opposed to this. I want to thank John and everybody that's speaking up here today, and please vote no, and we appreciate your help. Thank you.
Anyone else? I'm going to leave the public hearing open, so in case the council members would like to call somebody up, we'll be able to do that and be within our requirements. So, start with Councilwoman Watch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, Mr. Casey, the some of the pictures that you showed, I got an email yesterday that code enforcement was called on those for those pictures, so they have been cited to do that, and there's some things that need to be fixed within fourteen days. I was told they were on the list, but they didn't have a timeframe that they're going to be fixed. Now, they have a timeframe on some of the things, so, and we're not done yet, so. Mr. Lapuza, with regards to the insurance coverage on that property, was that coverage set up that it that property could be put at a rebuilt status?
The question being, was it fully insured for for replacement? The answer there is that the property was fully insured as required by our lending requirements and all that, in terms of of how that policy would read, and actually includes a rider or an attachment which allows for improvement of the property to meet changes in code. Unfortunately, that does things like cover fire sprinklers. It doesn't cover seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of grading at the site. It doesn't cover hundreds of thousands of dollars of ADA ramps to address that. So, the the result is that it was insured for what it would cost to build that building on a perfect site. It wasn't insured for us to be able to rebuild the building and satisfy the grade requirements of the fire department and satisfy the federal requirements of the Americans with Disabilities Act.
I'm going to reserve the rest, oh, can I? If if this partial is approved, I don't know if I asked you or Tammy, but I'll just ask, can they build more apartments along Martin Drive? Because there is concern that if this is approved, that there will be more apartments built along that street.
Sure. Per the existing zoning that was approved in back in nineteen sixty-seven, this is under an RS one twenty. At the time in nineteen sixty-seven, it was called a PD plan development at that time, which today relates to they would need site plan approval for any further construction that they would do. In my opinion, I don't know how they would have room along Martin Drive to do anything based on existing conditions, but they could not come in for a building permit and get approval. Anything that they are going to do in that area would have to go through a public hearing process and have approval by city council.
Okay. Last but not least, Fontanel Hills, when I was in high school about ten years ago, was the regency of our area. I met with the homeowners, I met with the developers, I've met with planning, I've talked to Tammy more in the last week than I probably have in my career so far. I'm I talked with fire, I've talked to the council, I've talked to the mayor, and again, know more than I ever wanted to know about zoning and planning and. Mr. John, you can tell that you're very passionate about your where you live, and I would hope that more people would be as passionate as you are where they live, then we wouldn't have any other issues in our town. Your group is very well organized, very well presented, you spoke well, you presented some great points, and if I ever need a PR person, I want you on my side.
Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. Mark, I want you to expand a little bit on this insurance. You get insurance, it was built according to the codes and regulations, probably in the sixties?
Yes.
Okay. So, over the years, and I don't know how many ownerships it's gone back and forth, but over the years, I mean, you said it was fully insured. Repeat what you were saying, that we're fully insured, da-da-da, but to meet.
So, the the insurance cost of the building, what actually burnt down, is what we have insurance for. And and a kicker on top of that for code enhancements, that kicker would cover small items like additional with doors and those sorts of things. It doesn't cover, and just to to use the round numbers, we're talking about a building that if we had a perfectly flat site, ready to go, no changes needed to be made, like what we have at our proposed site, it's approximately a three million dollar building, although getting more expensive every day, I'm sure. The requirements necessary to make this work on the original site would add about a million and a half dollars, or fifty percent the cost of this project. And quite frankly, it's not the insurance company's problem if the grading changes or ADA changes or fire department changes have come in. That doesn't make our premium suddenly pay out one and a half times what the cost of the building is. So, we we're stuck trying to balance what those additional costs will be with where else we might be able to build.
But I'm sure you could have, I don't know the term, upgraded your policy to say we, if we lose a building, we want it to be built to today's standards.
I'm I'm, two points on that. Number one, I'm not sure that we could have obtained insurance for more than it's worth. My car isn't worth a hundred thousand dollars, but I can't get a hundred thousand dollar insurance policy on it just because I pay enough of a premium. You have to have a real risk of loss under insurance law. Additionally, we are insuring the building itself. We can't insure grading, we can't insure the ADA ramps that don't exist, and part of that is because the insurance companies know that those things may change, and there may be those requirements, and the insurance companies are not going to go check grade and check site plans and see what the current zoning requirements are. So, I I understand that that the idea you would think, as your insurance guy will always tell you, whatever happens, you're covered, don't worry about it. Well, then, when you have that fire, you find out there's a large asterisk next to that, and you're going to have to get creative if you want to come anywhere close to what you need to do.
But but you've had that asterisk on a couple of other fires in that complex, so if there was an issue, how do we get a building built back to the level and requirements today that could have been addressed addressed in additional coverage or insurance? I mean, if I buy a house for two hundred thousand, it's worth four hundred thousand today and it burns down, are they going to build me a four hundred thousand dollar house?
Depends on the policy. I can tell you, I can tell you that they're.
Depending on the policy, but if I have full replacement, contents, the home, and it burns down, they're going to build me a house, and I only paid two hundred, but they're going to pay four hundred thousand to get it rebuilt.
But if the setback requirements require you to buy all your neighbors' houses and knock them down in order to rebuild your house, your insurance isn't going to cover the cost of all those neighbors. The issue is that, again, we're insuring the item itself, not the ancillaries that are unquantifiable until we get to this stage. I don't know how an insurance company would write a policy for that, and I'm scared to death what it would cost.
Okay. Thank you.
So, we've had in this complex, three buildings that have burnt down, correct?
Correct.
And where the one that just recently burnt down, just to the west of that, was a building that was rebuilt about ten years ago, we thought?
Before our ownership.
Okay. So, with that knowledge and knowing that, you know, when you have, if you have more than twenty units on a campus that have to be rebuilt, you're going to have to go to ADA. And we've unfortunately had three buildings, what kind of timeframe are we thinking, Chief? Ballpark?
Seven, eight years.
That we've lost three buildings? Okay.
Actually, a little bit longer.
Actually, a little bit longer. We had someone when I first came here, the first one.
Okay. So, the question becomes, and I know you're just representing the developer, you're not the insurance guy, whatever, but I would highly recommend that this company start looking at, if we have another building that burns down, unfortunately, we're going to have, this building has to be ADA compliant because it's more than twenty units, that if there's another one, we better be prepared with a rider, expanded policy, something to be able to put this back into its place, because now we're having to add all the ADA and and Chief, did those did those codes, fire codes, change since that last one was rebuilt?
No, and I don't believe they have.
So, there shouldn't be.
We've adopted some new codes, but I'm not sure which ones would apply to that, to the apartments.
So, the only cost that would be more expensive would be the replacement value, because we all know new construction has kind of gone through the roof recently, and those policies should be upgrading as well with that. And if the fire codes hadn't really changed, the only thing that really changed was the ADA compliant, and they better be prepared that that could happen again, because if there's another building that unfortunately burns down, where are they going to put that one at? Because I know they've got to replace it.
And that's and that's very much a concern, is that if if another building were to burn down, if it were on a site that met the grade requirements and can feasibly meet the the requirements for ADA, it'd be rebuilt in sight. If we have another situation like this, where it's built on a heavy grade or built on something that's otherwise inaccessible, we we may just be out of luck. And to reiterate, whatever it is that we would do, we would be back here seeking for approval. Nothing we're looking for today is anything that would bind you or anybody who comes after you or city planning to approve the next one, to say, well, you let us put a building on Martin Drive once, so you shouldn't care what we do. We fully know that we're going to be back here for anything, God forbid, that should happen again, and and expect the balancing act that the city council is required to do to continue to be in place.
I I would, I would disagree with the insurance. You you can buy insurance to cover that, you can insure it for more. That's, I think that was, if if you're not buying the insurance, if you're not paying for the additional insurance, that risk goes on you or your your client. So, I have a hard time empathizing, because if the same thing happens to the building to the east, we approve this, I think you're going to be asking to build another building to the south of this building. That problem's got to be taken care of somewhere else, and it probably should have been taken care of before this building burned down. We've had three buildings burned down in ten years. I mean, you got an issue there, you got to you got to take care of. I'm just going to add that I don't get to vote unless there's a tie, they don't let me vote, so, but I can talk, and I just, I want to say, this was planned, it's a planned development back in nineteen sixty-seven. I don't know who the mayor was, probably Hayworth at that timeframe. They're sitting in here, I was six years old, their council's sitting here approving this plan, and I got to tell you, I think Joe Dennis and the developers, when they put this in, gave it a lot of thought. Those apartments, when you drive down Martin Drive now, you can't really tell you're in an apartment complex living area, you don't even really, you're just looking at the trees. You're driving down there and straight ahead, you got the open area where the clubhouse is, you've got nice houses. So, I think the apartments, he did a very good job putting those apartments in there, but I think you stick an apartment right, right at the end of the street, that that changes the whole development. Your eyes go from that apartment, wow, there is, look at the apartments around here. So, I think it ruins what the original site plan was meant to do. We are trying to protect our our properties in the in the right way. Bellevue, I've talked about this a hundred times, very limited on space, this is one of our premier areas, very nice area, even with your apartments in there, they're buried into the trees, it looks nice. But once you start changing that original thought, I I'm sure they didn't let you put an apartment back there in nineteen sixty-seven for this reason. It it it's not what was meant to be, I don't think, so. I have an issue with the spot for that apartment. I think the insurance could have been purchased to put that building back on the same site. I think, you know, it's cheaper not to have it, but that risk runs to the owner at that point, so I I think it can be built. So, anyway, those are my thoughts, and I just think we need to, we need to protect some of these areas. We're we're heavy on workforce housing, we've already got, we've got plenty of apartments and houses, we need to protect some of these nicer areas that we have in Bellevue, and there's not too many of them. So, I'd just like the council to to plug that into their thoughts when they're voting.
I just wanted to add to what the mayor said. We were involved in a meeting, and there's a group that wants to build affordable housing, and everyone's got a different definition of what that is. And what their group is saying, it's houses that are new construction at two hundred and fifty and less, and they came to our meeting and said, we don't have an issue in Bellevue, because you guys are doing this, but we just want to let you know what it is that we're doing. And so, I totally agree with them. We need to protect the integrity of the regency of Bellevue, as it's always been known to live in.
Any other questions for Mr. Lapuza or any of the residents that spoke?
Hope the comment finished.
Nope, you can come up, yep, you haven't talked, but, nope. You haven't talked yet, right?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lapuza.
My name is Bruce Stolman, I'm live at two oh five Martin Drive West, which is almost right across from where they want to do it. I just have a couple of comments just from listening to this. The photos you saw of the disarray of garages, houses, et cetera, it shows that they're not totally, this is my opinion, not totally interested in maintenance. So, the thing is, where was the money that should have been put into the maintenance to upgrade this, because there are hazards? My suggestion is to have them take the money that they didn't put into that and put it into building apartments where it should be where it burned down. There's money somewhere that has not been used to upgrade. How long will it be if they put this in before they totally just ignore it like it appears what's happened right now? Like has been pointed out, as you drive through Fontanel Hills, the homeowners put that sign up at the top of the hill, that wasn't done by the city of Bellevue. The median, as you come into Fontanel Hills, the trees, the shrubs, the flags, the luminaries at Christmas time, we have a love for what we said, and all of you have access to this, is that it's a beautiful, beautiful area. I moved there, my parents or my in-laws were one of the first nine families that moved in over fifty years ago. I've been there close to thirty. And the area I live on, I shouldn't be living there, it was originally promised as a green space. Okay, I'm glad to be there. How long before something else happens? How long before something else happens as we go through there? So, the real question is, we've had three losses of buildings. It's not if another one burns down. What I have seen is, when's the next one going to burn down? Because nobody who owns those apartments is really maintaining them. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, public hearing is still open, if there's anybody that want to, that hasn't spoken, please come forward. Anybody that has not spoken, that wants to talk, please come forward. Seeing nobody, I will close the public hearing, and I'll, uh, go to the council and see if there's any further questions. Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna make a motion, and then after it's seconded, if it's seconded, I will then make a comment. I'll make a motion that... We approve 14A.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, second by Welch, and Councilman Cook.
Mayor, I'll just make a comment, I will not be su- supporting this.
And I will not either.
So, this, uh, um, the motion's in the affirmative, but if you do not want to approve it, you need to vote against it. So, um, just want to make sure that's clear. Is there any other questions? Councilman Prester?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to acknowledge the people and their concerns and their organization, and them being here to voice those concerns. I just feel a little sadness because all of you are, I would say, doing better than some people may be, and I would hope the government would always be responsive to all people. It's sounding like we're going to vote this down tonight. I would hope that, and I guess I'm talking to myself, but everybody else too, that everybody, every neighborhood group who comes forward and has a valid concern would get the same consideration. I'm not saying they don't, but representing people with very little means, oftentimes, their voices aren't heard as clearly, or they're not able to articulate them as well. And so, you've done a very good job, you may be rewarded for that, and I would hope always that justice is blind and that it's always equal. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? And I did live in that building that burned down 30 years ago, so it's kind of sad. Okay, so, uh, we have a motion by Cook, second by Welch, to approve 14A, but if you do not want to approve the apartments being built there, you will vote against it. If you are for the apartments being built there, vote yes. So, please vote.
All voting no, motion denied.
Okay, 6-0, so the motion failed.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for coming out, and, uh, thank you, Mr. Paluza as well, representing your side. Um, and, uh, we love the public input, and you are listened to. Um, and, uh, you have a good council here, and, uh, we, we appreciate your, uh, your patience and, and working with us, so... Moving on to item 15, Resolutions. 15A, Resolution Number 2022-10, a resolution updating master fee schedule. Yeah, I'll, I'll just hold off a minute so they can exit. Okay, so, once again, 15A, Resolution Number 2022-10, a resolution updating master fee schedule. Do I have a motion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor, I'll make a motion, we approve 15A.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, second by Welch. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carried.
Thank you. 16C, recommend the city council approve the new participating provider agreement with Blue Cross Blue Shield and authorize the mayor to sign. Do I have a motion? Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve item 16C.
Second.
Motion by Welch, second by Burns. Any comments, questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carried.
Thank you. 16D, recommend approval and authorize the mayor to sign the contract with SEI and Cox and to purchase goods and services from additional vendors in an amount not to exceed $137,693.82. Do I have a motion? Councilman Burns?
I move that we approve item 16D.
Second.
Motion by Burns, second by Stinson, comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carried.
Thank you. 16E, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the amendment to the June 19th, 2021 agreement with HGM Associates, Inc. for the Public Works Facility Master Plan Project in an amount not to exceed $36,700. Do I have a motion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor, I'll make a motion, we approve 16E.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, second by Welch. Comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carried.
Thank you. 16F, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement with JEO Consulting Group, Inc. for professional services for the city of Bellevue's Gilmore Lake Road Improvements Project. Do I have a motion, Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion, we approve item 16F.
Second.
Motion by Welch, second by Stinson. Comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carried.
Thank you. 16G, approval to purchase three pickup trucks for the street department from Anderson Ford per the extended state of Nebraska contract pricing in an amount not to exceed $114,700. Do I have a motion? Councilman Burns?
I move that we approve item 16G.
Second.
Motion by Burns, second by McCaw. Comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carried.
Thank you. 16H, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the Amendment Number Two agreement with Bellevue University for the cost-sharing Hayworth Park wastewater collection system in an amount not to exceed $142,700. Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I recommend that we approve item 16H.
Second.
Motion by Welch, second by Burns. Comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carried.
Thank you. 16I, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the memorandum of understanding between the city of Bellevue and Bellevue University. Do I have a motion? Councilman Burns?
I move that we approve item 16I.
I'll second that.
Motion by Burns, second by Welch. Comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carried.
Thank you. Item 17, administration reports, comments must be limited to items on the current reports. The monthly reports are attached to the first meeting each month, and they are attached to this packet. Are there any questions? Okay, those will be filed. No closed session, do I have a motion to adjourn? Councilwoman Welch?
I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Welch, second by Burns, please vote. See ya. Drive safe. Oh, vote, yeah, we gotta vote. Please vote, did I say that? Oh, okay.
All voting yes, we are adjourned.
Thanks, everybody. Good job, Angela.